If I could have your attention, please. Anyone that needs to sign up to speak, I'll give you about 30 more seconds. So wave your hand if you hadn't signed up. Okay. Ms. Whitby, you want to call or roll?
Mr. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Fouch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
I'm sure he's present, sir.
I believe Alderman White is going to pray and pledge for us. Please write.
Thank you, God, for the opportunity to come before you again. And I'm going to dedicate a few moments of silence to the many firefighters in Arizona who lost their lives. Father, we pray a blessing on those families and the communities that are affected by this loss. And, Father, it reminds us of how, every day, Lord, our own fire and police and other city service workers put their lives on the line for us all, Lord, and we're grateful for that. Father, I pray that you give us special wisdom tonight as we're deciding the matters of the city. Lord, give us favor in decisions we make. Father, we thank you and bless you in the name and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty, justice, and moral thought.
Second. My own motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications?
Move except 1 through 8.
1 through 8.
Second.
Second. We'll pull any of them. Seeing none, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications?
Move except 1 through 8.
1 through 8.
Second.
Second. Will it pull any of them? Seeing none, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications?
Move except 1 through 8.
1 through 8.
Second.
Second. Will it pull any of them? Seeing none, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications?
Move except 1 through 8.
1 through 8.
Second.
Second. Will it pull any of them? Seeing none, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications?
Move except 1 through 8.
1 through 8.
Second.
Second. Will it pull any of them? Seeing none, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just go straight on into public hearings. We've got two scheduled for today. The first one is regarding 01361, Alderman Fouch. Ms. Whitby?
Okay. 01361 is an ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 5806 MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock from C-3 to C-4, amending ordinance 7697 and granting a conditional use to allow auto sales. And this is the third and final reading.
Okay. I'm going to call that public hearing open. And open the microphone for comments. If anyone's signing up to talk on that particular piece of legislation, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Joe Reynolds, and this is a Ward 3 situation. And I've lived in Ward 3 for more than 30 years, and I represent the Meadowland Property Owners Association. And we're, I guess, opposed to this going C-4 for a conditional auto sale, which is a used car lot. If the car lot fails, and we're still sitting at a C-4, we could possibly have a liquor store going in there, a pawn shop, or anything else on a big C-4. So we're opposed to that. And we also have a concern about the businesses on MacArthur Drive. I believe MacArthur actually starts about Pershing Boulevard, which is near the 2700 block, and goes, if you go out to the 5800 block, that's not very far, and you already have seven auto sales, used car lots, there now. And I don't hardly see how another could prosper and make it there on this very small, narrow lot. And I don't hardly see how anybody could prosper there as a car lot. And I don't see they have enough room there to do very many cars. Plus, it approaches directly on a residential house next door. I don't know how they feel about it. I have not talked to them. But the carport on that house reaches almost all the way over to the property line. And like I say, I can't see going to C-4 for sure. And like I say, we have too many car lots. We also have two auto body repair shops. So we've got nothing but cars on one fashion or other on MacArthur Drive, all the way out to that area right now. So I'm asking you people to reconsider this, to the point where let's find some other business to go in there. I know the man buys business, and I own business property myself, and I want to rent it, or lease it, or use it, or whatever. And I know that people have a right to do that. And I know also that we have ordinances and laws that govern what we do and what we don't do. Otherwise, we could have a hog farm next door to a million-dollar house. So we need to consider that we're getting few too many used car businesses up and down that road. We also have two motorcycle businesses up and down that road, and three hawk shops. So we need some good businesses in there that's going to do something besides sell some used, for lack of a better expression, worn-out cars, or whatever. So I appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Todd Armstrong. I own the property. And it's not going to become a liquor store, or pawn shop, or anything of that nature. I'm just trying to have a business that'll flourish there. There's plenty of room. With the guidelines that have been set out, with 15 as a maximum number of cars, as far as my neighbor, immediately, the residential, she is completely fine with it. We were able to appease her by not putting up a fence, which those changes were made in the previous meeting. All the other neighbors I've spoken with have been extremely supportive.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing. Let's go ahead and go right on into the other public hearing, unless you want to call that legislation now. I don't care. All right, let's go ahead. Ms. Whitby, you want to call 01362?
Yes, sir. Resolution, I mean, an ordinance establishing the Indian Hills Restricted Parking District, third and final reading.
Okay. Opened up public hearing for 01362. Bill, I know you want to speak. And let me make everything perfectly clear. Bill and his wife together are six minutes, and I've given him six minutes. So everybody else has got three. Bill's got six.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and the good citizens of North Little Rock, I'm Bill Sosby at 7505 Flint Road. I've lived there for 21 years in Indian Hills. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the 25-foot maximum RV length proposed by the Indian Hills Parking District. I have a little slideshow, if they could begin, that will show you what we're talking about there. It'll show you that we do have a parking problem and a property upkeep problem in our neighborhood. And that cracked and crumbling driveways, overgrown lawns, gutters, soffits, and fascias falling off of houses, roofs with blue tarps on them, do much more to devalue our property values than the length of an RV parked down the street. Our code officers have enough to do now without running around measuring RVs to see whether it complies with this proposed ordinance. What it also shows you that the length of an RV is not an issue, and that it would be unfair and perhaps discriminatory to just pick an arbitrary length and set that as a law. Does it make any real difference whether someone has a 30-foot or a 35-foot RV parked in their own driveway? I'll read you some facts on the parking issue as you watch the slides here. They show much more than the RV situation. They show a lot of upkeep and property devaluation situations throughout our neighborhood. I'll read you some of these facts as you watch this. And remember, these are people's homes and people's possessions that they have worked for, and that their families enjoy using. And you may not own one, but your neighbors do, and as long as it's parked in a legal fashion, it's their right to be. This is still the United States of America. Out of the estimated 1,200 homes in Indian Hills, a survey was taken and found that 31 front or side yards had vehicles parked in the grass or the dirt. That's 2.5% of the homes in the three neighborhoods that make up Indian Hills. 25 had boats parked at their house, eight of which were parked on the grass. Six homes had RVs over 25 feet. That's .5%, and only one of those was parked on the grass. 28 had utility trailers or enclosed trailers, 12 parked on the grass. Eight had RVs or campers under 25 feet, and only two were parked on the grass. As you can see, the length of an issue, the length of an RV is no issue in the reasoning for implementing new parking codes. Our neighborhood and controlling where we can park and what type of pavement we park our vehicles on will help control the erosion and the mud washing down the street, but it'll still be up to the individual homeowner as to how they take care of their property. As you can see in some of these slides, there's soffits and gutters falling off of houses, ruddy yards. Some areas look almost like service stations with, you know, vehicles up on blocks and jacks and things of that nature. But I don't think you'll see anything related to the length of an RV in this video that would imply a longer-than-25-foot rule should be invoked. We love our neighborhood out there. It's a great place to grow up, and we try to take care and watch out for our neighbors out there. And we hope the council will reconsider that length issue and go ahead and vote in the parking district and help us clean up our neighborhood. But the length of an RV has no bearing on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sosby.
Can I get Mr. Carter up to the microphone to ask him a question?
Sure.
I'd answer this. You were the...
Yes, sir.
You were kind of the center of the universe when we invented these parking districts, what, three, four years ago now? How long ago was it? When we had the discussion about what parking districts could choose from as far as regulations, the buffet line, I don't recall us discussing or having the option to restrict the length of RVs as long as they were parked on a driveway. Is that correct?
I think that, first, I'd say whether I was the center of the universe, I don't know. I was described.
We were coming to you for information.
I'll take that.
Yes.
We had an extensive number of public hearings, discussions among the council. Parking's been an issue for a long time, and trying to figure out a way to address it. Citywide regulations didn't work, you know, and some neighborhoods wanted different rules than other neighborhoods. So this seemed like the proper path to follow is to allow those neighborhoods who wanted more restrictive rules of vehicle to get there, so they could kind of self-impose the rules that they wanted within their own parking districts. And state law accommodates that. We wanted to standardize the rules as best as we could, especially when we were talking about the length of a vehicle being 25 feet. I know that sounds a bit arbitrary. If it was 24, it would sound arbitrary. If it was 30, it would sound arbitrary. But that was a point of political compromise, is how that length came to be. And when we defined vehicles of that length, it was based upon our code enforcement officers' understanding that wherever we have those districts, this is what a large RV is, these are the rules that apply in the district. And it makes it easier to enforce, easier to make sure that the rules are applied even-handedly. When we established parking districts, one, a concern was to limit the number of rules and the creativity that was allowed in establishing those districts to make them easier to enforce. That was one of our concerns.
Well, I guess my question I'm asking is, did we put, was one of the choices that we could put into a parking district, or one of the regulations that we could put in a parking district, dealing with the length of an RV? I thought it was, we had to deal with whether RVs were parked on pavement or on non-paved surfaces.
Yes. Now, I think there were different rules for large recreational vehicles. I'd have to refresh my memory on that. I hadn't looked at it in a while.
There is a rule that they can park a large RV in the city right of way for up to 48 hours to prepare it for a trip. Likewise, they can unprepare it from a trip, and they're limited to 48 hours.
Right.
But if they park their RV in their driveway, are they, is that illegal?
In working on this application and this legislation, the research I showed, and what I came to the conclusion was, is that these parking districts mirror what's in the zoning. Chapter 9, Section 4 defines what commercial vehicles are, and it also defines what large recreational vehicles are. And that ordinance defines them as recreational vehicles that are longer than 25 feet. And in the application, it doesn't say that if they're 25 feet or longer, they can't be parked in your property. It references back to the parking, the municipal code with having to do with parking. And that defines what a large recreational vehicle is. And we referenced everything back to that. So I guess the answer to your question is yes.
To the extent that we can, we don't want to have define a term as one way under our zoning code and then another way under, you know, a parking regulation. We want to have uniformity of our terms as best we can. I don't know if we're answering the question.
Citywide...
Under the parking ordinance, yes.
Restrictions the length of an RV...
Just as you can't park your 18-wheelers.
A paved surface in front of the building line. That's citywide, correct?
Correct.
My head's full of electricity right now. I'll be happy to go look at that regulation and give you a better answer. You got a good feel, Alderman, what they're saying? Okay. All right. Any other comments? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding the Indian Hills Parking District? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Steve White, and I'm president of the Indian Hills Neighborhood Association. I've been here before, starting back in, I believe, January. It's the same issue. One of the things we have to deal with was, we have to deal with reality. And as Mr. Fleming indicated, city code is not really changed by this proposed ordinance and this proposed parking district with restrictions. The code at Section 1.4.1 defines a large RV as something that is more than 25 feet long and something greater than eight feet in height. Anybody who, again, back to reality, anybody who has seen a camper, an RV of any sort, knows that the longer one is typically the taller it is. And that has an important implication, several important implications, in terms of what we're dealing with here. If you have a mass of anything that's 25 feet or more long, eight feet or taller in height, then you have a sizable distraction in a neighborhood. You've got a vehicle that, if it's parked on the street for too long, it's going to block access to emergency vehicles. That's a legitimate public policy interest here. It's going to block the view of emergency responders to house numbers and any other identifying features of a house. That's got to be considered here, not just the property values. And if you look at the value of a house with a neighbor who has a large camper, and, again, Mr. Sosby's is in wonderful shape, but a lot of these are not. Some of these are eyesores in and of themselves. The value of a house is going to be determined on the value of the neighborhood and how appealing that neighborhood is or is not. He's indicated, Mr. Sosby has indicated quite correctly, that this is a minority of owners that can afford something 20 feet or 25 feet or longer. But, and I think Mr. Fleming and our city attorney will tell you that, if they've done discrimination law, and I know they have, that there's yet to be a court that will decide that a 25-foot length constitutes a protected class for discrimination purposes. Again, we're looking at property values, we're looking at emergency response times, we're looking at all those things that city code already requires. City code includes in the RV definitions travel trailer, pickup coach, motorhome, camping trailer, auto campers, and vessels. They are all described in the city code. This proposed district doesn't change that. It tries to preserve the property values. I agree. We need, as Mr. Sosby says, we need the restrictions on parking in front yards and side yards. I have a neighbor that parks his pickup truck next, not exactly next to it, but within 10 or 12 feet of a fire hydrant in his front yard. That doesn't help property values, that doesn't help emergency response. We've got a situation where plenty of neighbors in our neighborhood are guilty of bad neighbor syndrome. Sure, I wish we could do more for that. This is a step in the right direction, and we're not changing things. We're just allowing the city to enforce what's already there, and we think it's a necessary function, or we wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Witcher?
Do we have any other public comments, Mayor?
Any others? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Pam Houston. I live in Indian Hills. First of all...
Pam, pull your mic down just a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
We've lived in Indian Hills for about 13 years. We have never, one time, been notified by anyone in the Indian Hills Association about any ordinance being passed or proposed. I don't know who sent these notices out. I was told that there were notices sent out. I didn't know anything about this, and I have an RV in my side yard. I have mine on pavers. When I bought it, before I brought it home, I went to the books, looked in the city ordinances, looked at code, went and bought the pavers, spent a lot of money to come home, put those out. I'm well within, my motorhome is 29, 30 foot. It's on the pavers. It doesn't obstruct any emergency vehicles. It's not close to a fire hydrant. You know, we just did what we were supposed to do when we parked the vehicle there. Now, thanks to Bill, I find out, only through him, had he not come and talked to me, because I knew. He knew me, and I knew him by sight. That's when I found out about all this. My neighbor across the street, we know through other neighbors, he doesn't like that RV parked there. Well, there's a lot in my neighborhood I don't like. My yard is kept up, just like Bill's. The grass is not growing over those pavers. You know, everything is tidy. My RV is not obstructing anything. And to mention something that Steve said, I'm also a realtor for Krylik, and the value of a home is determined by the comps in that area. I've sold a lot of homes in Indian Hills, Lakewood. Lakewood's got a lot of RVs also. I'm kind of confused as to what the city ordinance says, the code for the city of North Little Rock, and then we have all these Indian Hill things just thrown out here without any of the people being notified. I've notified people myself to find out how they feel about this, and nobody knew anything about it. So let's at least get the people notified and give them a chance to come and speak their voice. It is our neighborhood. We do try to help each other and look out for each other. But, you know, when you've got something like this passing, what am I supposed to do? Are you going to grandfather me in? Or I haven't heard anything about that. When I read the city ordinance, and tell me if I'm wrong, I read nowhere about the length of the RV, or the trailer, or the, you know. I didn't see any of that. So if I'm wrong, tell me.
In the public comment section, we don't need to get into a question and answer, because then it could go on all night long. But I believe what the Counselor said a little bit earlier, that the code actually does say anything over 25. But you're two Aldermen could probably address how the notification was done. I'm not sure.
Also, Alderman, I sent an email to both of you guys when Bill notified me of this. I didn't hear anything back from you. I got your email address off the website. I thought surely that would be the correct one. But, you know, this is not being done educationally. The neighborhood is not being given a chance to understand exactly what's going on.
All right. Thank you. Any comments on that from anybody? Ms. Ross?
I can answer as far as Lakewood, as far as the RVs in Lakewood, LRID did pass, you know, they brought to us a restricted parking district. And one of the options in the beginning was that they wanted to restrict RVs from the Lakewood Parking District, which is a large, large district. And after so many comments, and I'm sure you all remember, we had quite a bit of discussion on that, that was removed from one of their options. So RVs are allowed in the Lakewood, and each of these are separate. Each district is separate. So that's why Lakewood has them.
Well, my question there would be, if you can park a 40-foot motorhome in Lakewood, then that's against what the actual citywide code says. Is that right, Counselor? Is that what you just said earlier?
The municipal code does prohibit the parking of those within the city, yes.
That's what I thought. Yes, sir.
Maybe I need to. But my recollection is, it defines it...
Yeah. Mr. Witcher?
Okay. But in order to address some of this, you know, we began this process in the summer of '12, having these discussions at the neighborhood meetings. You know, you don't attend neighborhood meetings. They send out emails. Through the community services, they send out letters. And I know it was in several of those letters from that period up until the time it was adopted back in February. Apparently, either you didn't read your mail, or you're not, you know, if you were getting emails from the association, you know, you weren't paying any attention to those. But that's how, in fact, was distributed. So with that said, you know, I'm telling you how it was put out. Now, one of the things that we will have to do if this is adopted is we will, in fact, send out another notice, and that will also be through the community services mailer.
You're talking about neighborhood services?
Neighborhood services, yes. Okay. Now, part of what drove this process in the beginning is, Indian Hills area is 50-plus years old. We still have a lot of elderly people that live in that area, even though the neighborhood is changing and younger folks are moving in. Also, more rental units are coming about in the Indian Hills area, particularly on the, I guess, the east side of JFK.
I mean, I've got the prop- um, the parking regulations-
Yeah, he's going down there to pull it. Let's let, let's let our lawyer do it.
I asked you to bring that up here.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and work on the agenda just a little bit, and then we'll come back. How's that sound?
Okay.
Okay. Is that all right, everybody? Okay, Ms. Whitby, let's go into regular business.
May oh thirteen fifty-four, Mayor Smith.
I'm gonna withdraw that, and I will tell you why. I met with the developer, and it was a little bit premature. I'm not quite ready to grow out that way yet, until I'm convinced that we can provide them service. Uh, it is a farm. I mean, he has no plans today to, to turn a shovel and develop anything, and so he was agreeable to pull the legislation, and that if he decided that he wanted to develop his farm, then he would come back and talk to us, and we would see if we could provide services at that time. So I will withdraw oh thirteen fifty-four, please.
Oh thirteen sixty-one, Alderman Fauch.
Let's go ahead and pull it up. Go for it.
Good. Call it or pull it?
Yeah, call it.
Call it. Um, an ordinance reclassifying property located at fifty-eight oh-six MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock from C-three to C-four, amending ordinance seventy-six ninety-seven and granting a conditional use to allow auto sales. Third and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, in, in conversations I had with Alderman Fauch, uh, he asked that the amendment be, be, uh, drafted. We drafted that amendment, and have circulated it.
Okay.
Is it still your desire to-
Okay. What, if we could, before we go to the amendment, I, I have a question for Mr. Voels. I don't know if he- Mr. Voels?
Yes, sir. Since this was originally presented as a zoning change from C-three to C-four, uh, the applicant had to go out and have a note, make notification to the nearby residents of the request to change to the, the C-four.
That's correct.
If we do an amendment to keep it as a C-three, is there any notification requirements back to the, the residents that were affected by their original zoning request?
I believe it's a, uh, legal question, but traditionally, we've been allowing people to decrease the request during the public hearing after notice. Um, amendment of the request to a lighter, uh, use question, I don't think would necessitate the re-advertising, but it is, I could be corrected.
I can't answer that question off the top of my head, but his logic is sound, in that it is not, it is not a rezoning, the zoning remains the same, still gonna be C-three, we're just granting a special use permit.
I just wondered if there was any other obligation, since we requested approval or denial from the, the nearby residents, now notice would be, uh, that that change is not going forward, so, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Are you gonna amend this?
Okay. Well, yeah, what I like to do is, is offer oh three sixty-one amendment to, uh, remove the classification and change to a special use, so it would remain as a C-three, uh, and, uh, become a special use rather than a conditional use.
Second.
Hey, got a motion and second to amend. Any questions, any comments on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adopt as amended? Just a question.
I have questions, and, and this is for the Alderman of this area. Uh, I know Alderman Robinson, this is one of her things, that she's wanting to clean up, you know, car lots and different things, and, and now Ward Three, it seems that, you know, we're getting quite a bit along MacArthur. If there's any kind of been, you know, looked at that area, is this what the Alderman of Ward Four, is this what the residents of, of, I mean, Ward Three? If this is what they-
Actually, uh, no. Um, the neighborhood out there is actually more interested in economic growth, that they can support by, um, sustaining those businesses, and a used car lot is not something that, uh, the residents would, you know, continually go back and support, like another business that provided a good or service that, you know, is repetitive in nature.
Any other questions? Ms. Ross?
Uh, just for the, uh, for the applicant, you know, it says fifteen cars. I just wanna make sure, I don't know if this'll pass or if it doesn't pass, but just to make sure, then have their, you know, them to tell us that, you know, the fifteen cars, that includes employees, that includes customers, so there's a max of fifteen cars. I just wanna make sure that the applicant understands that, that if this is approved.
He's nodding his head, yes.
He's nodding his head, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Some who-
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
I have a question.
Mr. Height?
Mr. Voels? I wasn't present at the, I wasn't present at the planning commission meeting when this was discussed, and it was brought up, see where it's a seven-to-three vote, with three being absent. Was any of the residents, uh, in opposition of this? We've heard from one resident of Ward Three.
I don't recall any, well, I'm speaking, I don't remember, uh, nearby residents, uh, I mean, people adjoining, attending. I do know people in the vicinity spoke, uh, but I don't recall the adjoining neighbors attending. There was an elderly lady who had contacted our office and didn't want a fence, a privacy fence, along her property line as a buffer, um, and we relayed that. But Mr. Reynolds may correct me. Do you remember? Was there an angry opposition?
I don't know about the neighborhood.
But I don't recall anyone from that area attending. Thank you.
And Mr. Baxter?
Any of the neighborhood associations, uh, come out about this?
They spoke to me. Danboy Neighborhood Association spoke to me about it, and I just, you know, further like to say that, uh, you know, at, at times, you know, we vote things down regardless of whether there's support or against in the audience as well, so, um, you know, contact of the constituents I represent, I think should be, should be well enough, uh, a message sent.
Ms. Ross?
Uh, well, now with this amendment, though, this has changed it to a special use, so when this business is lo- no longer in busi- you know, if they go out of business or whatever, that, this goes away. So I was just wondering if the, you know, if the residents, this is something different than what was originally proposed, so I didn't know how. I guess I'm just curious.
Any comments? Ready for a vote?
This is not what-
Oh, no.
Motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Whitaker?
No.
Mueschenfeld?
Thank you very much.
Um, were you ready to-
Well, Counselor, are you ready to address the parking issue?
I had to refresh my memory.
Thank you.
And, uh, back in the day, it, it, it appears I made myself a handy cheat sheet, so, uh, I think I can refer to my handy-dandy cheat sheet and probably answer whatever questions that you might have.
I, I think the biggest question, and I certainly don't wanna speak for y'all, but the biggest question was, the twenty-five and the forty, Alderwoman Ross said when you were out of the office, uh, that it's okay to park a forty-footer in Lakewood. Uh, Counselor Fleming said that it's against citywide code to park a forty-footer in a residential neighborhood, so that was the number one confused thing. Debbie, is that right? Ms. Ross?
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, let, let me add a little information of that. Back when the parking districts were being discussed and proposed, a lot of y'all may remember, on North Hills Boulevard, there was a motor home parked in a circular driveway on North Hills Boulevard that was, I don't know how long a motor home is, but that's a good, what, forty, forty-five, forty-footer? And it was legal to park that motor home there, uh-
For seventy-two hours?
No. In the, in the, yeah, in a circular driveway in front of his building line, not in the, he wasn't on the city right-of-way, he was in his front yard, but his front yard was comprised of a circular driveway, and I, and at that time, it was legal for that resident to park that there. What we were trying to do when we disc- when we designed the parking districts, is we weren't trying to eliminate RVs, but we were trying to prevent people from parking RVs on the grass, on a non-paved surface.
Right.
And in some cases, there was only one or two of those in the Overbrook area. I'm not sure how many were in the Lakewood area, but it, it really didn't become an issue. The main thing we did was, was establish the parking district to prevent people from parking any type of vehicle or trailer on a non-paved surface in the parking district, without regard to the length of it.
Let, let me tell you where your, where your length rule came up with, because, uh, we banned parking recreational vehicles of every sort on the street. Can't park boats, can't park, you can't park anything on the street.
Right.
There is an exception for large recreational vehicles, there's a seventy-two-hour exception. It applies to large recreational vehicles. In other words, you can't fit it in your driveway.
I agree with you, ma'am.
Okay, so they are allowed to extend, not to impede traffic, but to extend across the right-of-way, uh, for a period not to exceed seventy-two hours. I think that was your amendment, if I remember, that was, uh, in section two-point-one-point-ten on our parking ordinance.
And I think we had it at, at twenty-four at one time, we went to, so, anyway.
It was already there.
So that's, that's the large recreational vehicle rule. Right now, in, in your standard recu- standard just residential areas throughout the city, not talking about a restricted district, uh, or just vehicles, standard car, truck, passenger vehicle that you own, you can park it on the street, you can park on your front lawn, you can park on your side lawn beside your house, you can park it in your carport or garage as you can, all the time. Uh, your backyard, sidewalks, trails are always prohibited. You cannot park across the sidewalk or trail, so that's one thing to keep in mind. Uh, if you have recreational vehicles, uh, they are not allowed to be parked on the street in any residential area. You can park them on the front lawn, you can park them on the side lawn. Once again, same thing goes true for carport garages, backyards are fine. Uh, commercial vehicles, uh, may not be parked on the street, uh, in residential neighborhoods. Uh, you cannot park commercial vehicles on your front lawn, you're not allowed to do that. Uh, you can park them on the side lawn, in other words, behind the building line, next to a s- next to a house, you can park your, uh, a commercial vehicle.
But not dump trucks.
Say again?
But not dump trucks.
Not dump trucks.
Not dump trucks. Correct?
That's a commercial vehicle, yeah. It, it's a commercial vehicle.
But we have a special-
I, I, I think that we made a special rule about that. I don't have, that's, that's probably too deep in the weeds for my cheat sheet. I'm going off on my cheat sheet right now, but, uh, but I, I can find you the rule on dump trucks. Uh, in historic districts, the rules are different. That's any district that's been recognized as historic by the city. Uh, uh, for, uh, vehicles in general, you park on the street, there is no parking at all on the front lawn or on the side lawn in a historic district, at all, period, uh, which means there's gonna have to be a paved surface to park on. Uh, and recreational vehicles and commercial vehicles, and neither can be parked on the street, uh, and of course, none on the front lawn or the side lawn, but they can be parked in garage, carport, or backyard. Uh, restricted parking districts have options with the rules.
Does it say how long the RV can be in the general city?
Uh, there are, really, the large recreational vehicle rule is, or, when rules apply to large recreational vehicles, is defined, off the top of my head, I'm saying, yes, it's twenty, over twenty-five feet in height or eight, twenty-five feet in length or eight feet in height.
Okay.
So that's when the large recreational rules kick in.
All right, are large recreational vehicles allowed in the city? That's not in a parking district?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I have been wrong before, and I, I think I was confusing commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles.
Okay. So if you're not in a par- parking district, if you take Bill's forty-foot motor home, you can park it if you live in somewhere other than, that's not a parking district?
As long as it does not extend past the property line and on to the city's right-of-way or easement.
It, it is allowed to extend onto the right-of-way while loading and undriving.
Right.
But it can't impede traffic.
Okay, so the-
It extends to the right-of-way, and you can't cross the sidewalk, you can't block the sidewalk.
The exception that Lakewood Parking District did, allowing forty-foot motor homes, is completely legal and is not against citywide regulations.
Lakewood didn't, they didn't make that exception, they just didn't choose to add that option to their parking district. It, it was, it's legal citywide.
Didn't restrict.
Okay.
But you can restrict that, but Lakewood chose not to restrict them.
Okay, I see. Any, any other questions? Alderman, Fauch?
So, if a property owner, under the current code, the current rules, if a property owner has an RV in excess of twenty-five feet, they can park it on their property as long as it does not, and this is currently, does not block the sidewalk, uh, public access or anything like that, they are within their rights to do that currently.
Yes.
If Lakewood exempted their motor homes from this, the same exemption could be put into this current parking district with the proviso that the motor homes or vehicles or trailers in excess of twenty-five feet were parked on an appropriately paved, maintained surface?
Yes, and there are three rules that a restricted parking district can look at. It's pretty confined. Rule one is no parking in front or side yards. After decide whether they want that rule or they don't want that rule. Uh, rule number two is no parking commercial or large recreational vehicles. If they adopt that rule, commercial vehicles are prohibited, and large recreational vehicles are prohibited within the district. I think that's the point of debate here. Rule number three is an alternative to the previous rule, that is, no parking commercial vehicles. So it's kind of an alternative that would still allow the recreational vehicles, and I think that was the settlement point that we hit earlier.
But now, didn't Lakewood, I mean, the commercial and the recreational were two separate issues, though, that you could opt for, correct?
Well, it's-
Together.
One rule is A and B, and then the other rule is just A.
Right.
So it's, that's the way that they, that they're structured. If that makes sense?
Mr. Whitaker?
We might have made that more complicated than it had to be.
I don't remember it being that way.
Mr. Whitaker?
Okay. And I'll remind y'all that, you know, th- these discussions went back and forth rather heavily from December until the time this was initiated, and one of the things that I, I made certain of, is I guess, uh, the night that, that Mr. Sosby was there and voiced his concern, is that, that everyone understood these rules. Now, Mr. Height disagreed with my interpretation, which is, but, that, that night, but, you know, they voted two or three times, and I made sure that they understood exactly what they wanted in that area, so this is what the residents want.
So the way the legislation is drawn right now, Mr. Sosby and, and Ms. Pam would have to move their motor homes and, and have them parked somewhere else?
Unless they can get those motor homes on a hard surface behind the building lot line.
Well, what's your definition of building lot line?
She is, she said hers.
At the front of the house?
Front building line, usually.
Front building line.
Setback from the street.
Oh, okay. All right.
I mean, it's not, you know, it's not necessarily the front of the house, but the building setback.
Is, is that how this legislation is drawn up?
Yes.
Total.
Yes, it is.
Do you disagree with that, Bill?
Yeah, there's nothing in this, and I know I'm-
There's no exceptions.
But there's nothing in this opposed, uh, ordinance about the property line. It's just a eighty, twenty-five.
Yeah, hold on just a minute.
Thing within the rules.
And that's, that's not very good for me to have a sidebar conversation with you, and I apologize, that's what I was trying to do with Pam.
Okay.
We'll, we'll answer the questions up here.
Okay, the, the, the ordinance establishing the guidelines and rules define this, and it is in that master document that controls all, all of these parking districts.
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if a rule is adopted to prohibit large recreational vehicles from the district, large recreational vehicles are prohibited from the district.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Height? The, the way the current ordinance is, and the way the current parking district is, and I'm, sorry, I don't remember your name, ma'am, like, she's got a motor home, you got a motor home? She's got a motor home, you got a motor home? Motor home parked on pavers, which, best of my recollection, is not an approved paved surface.
Yes, they are.
It is, Charlie.
Yes, they are.
On pavers?
Yes.
Put one paver out and drive you four tires, and I don't...
Yep, it is.
Um, I don't recall us allowing vehicles parked on pavers. We don't do it in Overbrook. But anyway, and Mr. Sosby, your motor home is parked on a paved surface, right?
Yeah, sure is.
All right. The original intent of the parking district, I know in Overbrook, and correct me if I'm wrong, over in Lakewood, was to eliminate people parking any type of vehicle on a, on the grass or the front lawn, when there was a paved, perfectly good paved surface there for them to park. And we also prohibited them from parking any type of commercial vehicle in city right-of-way for an extended period of time unless they were conducting normal business activities. That's the parking district in Overbrook. It without, it has nothing to do with the length of their RV.
Mr. Witcher?
Okay, all right. Mr. Height, I'll remind you, you know, we're not talking about Lakewood or Overbrook.
I understand.
We're talking about Indian Hills.
I know that.
And that's what these folks adopted. I mean, you were sitting at the meeting when they voted.
No, I know, I...
Okay, get up, so...
Is, is it making sense to y'all to hold this?
Yes.
No. You know, these folks have waited long enough, you know, and there's, there's not gonna be an emergency clause on it, uh, enactment on it.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll have to admit that I'm a little confused.
Okay.
This is something that...
Mayor, if I may, please, one more thing, please.
Order here.
One more thing, please. Okay, all right, Mr. Sosby said there are six large motor homes out of 1,300 homes. So are you gonna let six, six of those 80, $100,000 motor homes influence what we're gonna do for the other 1,294 people?
Ms. Robinson.
Well, you know, in Ward Two, we have restricted parking, you know, in, in a couple of our residential areas, and it was something that the neighborhood wanted. And so I'm ready to vote, because this is something that the Indian Hills Neighborhood Group, uh, want. They have held meetings and sent out information, and I'm ready to move forward.
We have never done a parking district that was easy, so I'm, I'm not surprised that we're struggling a little bit tonight. Ms. Ross?
Well, I mean, I absolutely believe in restricted parking districts. I know Mr. Carter, he was our right-hand man on those. Uh, the only thing I'm concerned about is proper notification. I know that you said that, that information was sent out, and, you know, I asked that last time, and I called Neighborhood Services because I was trying to find out if it was a, you know, every-door mailer. And they did send that out, however, it was sent out after the meeting. The, the residents did not receive the letter until after the meeting because the information got to Neighborhood Services late for them to get that out. So that was just kind of one of my concerns. I mean, I'm all for it, believe me, but I just wanna make sure that proper notification is given.
And I understand, Ms. Ross, you know, again, you know, we started this process last summer, talking about this, and it's been in the Neighborhood Services bulletin several times that this issue is being considered and taken up, plus the emails or those individuals who provided their emails, they've, they've gotten this information. So, could, could Mr. White step forward, Mayor?
As to the timeliness of the notification, I got that information to Neighborhood Services. I was told by them it was on time and that as soon as they got it, they would take it to the mailer. I don't know exactly when it was mailed out, but it got to Neighborhood Services on time, and I am assuming that Neighborhood Services got it to the mailer on time.
Okay.
We did the best we could to get it out there in timely fashion to make sure people showed up for that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's, let me, let me call a bit of order here, y'all. I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, all of you guys are friends of ours, but we've got to, everything needs to run through the chair, if you don't mind. Any other comments? Ms. Ross, Ms. White? Ms. White?
I just had one question, Mr. Royles, about the pavers. It's my understanding that the pavers are to connect to the existing driveway, correct?
I, I believe that is correct.
They do.
Code enforcement...
Just one clarification on that.
Is an improved parking surface that stabilizes and provides appropriate dust control and limits permeability, including surfaces or pavers, concrete, asphalt, or other similar materials? So yes, that would be a sufficient parking.
And I'm personally very excited about pavers because I know that that helps with water that flows and it, you know, soaks into the ground as opposed to flooding, small flooding and affecting homes, I...
Allows some absorption.
Yes.
It'll maintain the, the vehicle, uh, from sinking.
Yes, both.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, is, this is just the second time it's been read, right? The second night?
This will be the third.
But I mean, this is the second council meeting that it's, that this has been discussed, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, what's your pleasure?
What?
Mr. Height?
I wanna, Mr. Wadley, I ask him, there's been a, there's a house on Randolph that I've called you about several times. The gentleman has a large pickup truck parked on pavers. None of those pavers are abutting the existing driveway, correct?
Uh, if the picture is that I've seen, that they come from the driveway out, he's not driving a, if, if we're talking about the same house, it's got, they abut the driveway.
The, the gentleman, the gentleman I'm referring to drives his pickup truck into the grass, and he puts four pavers underneath the wheels and he backs up on them. All right, is that a legal, is that a legally paved surface?
That's illegal, but I'm not familiar with that one.
Yeah, let's, let's try to stay on point a little bit. We have legislation in front of us. Anybody? Mr. Taylor?
So, what we're voting on, or what we will be voting on if we decide to vote is to approve a restricted parking district that you cannot have recreational vehicles in.
Correct.
Do you wanna answer that, Mr. Witcher?
You'll be able to have recreational vehicles, provided they're on a solid surface, provided they sit back behind...
Building line.
Building lot line. Now, the, the other, the other exception is because of the size, and that's, you know, that's, the city ordinance dictates that 25-foot.
Well, no, it doesn't. I mean, that's what we just cleared up just a second ago.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't. What, does it?
Mr. Mayor, my reading of the...
I got, we got two lawyers here, which, so somebody can figure this out.
We can arm wrestle about it. Um, my reading of the application and the ordinance says that there will be no parking in the front or side yards, and there will be no parking of commercial or large recreational vehicles as defined by Chapter Nine of the Parking and Zoning Ordinance, which includes recreational vehicles 25, longer than 25 feet and, and taller than eight feet. But so, a short, small recreational vehicle could be parked.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, he's sitting in the seat, so I'm, I'm taking his opinion that if you have a motor home that's over 25-foot and you live in Indian Hills, you can't park it on your property.
Anywhere. At all.
At all?
Nope.
That's what the, that's what it calls for?
No, you can't.
All right, any other questions? Uh, what's your pleasure?
Call it, please.
An ordinance establishing...
Okay, hold on just a second. Yes, sir.
So, the, the, the citizens that are here, you, you guys own recreational vehicles. How long are your, are your vehicles? Just general.
He said 20.
40.
47 feet?
37.
37.
Call it.
I have a question.
Call it, and then we'll ask a question.
An ordinance establishing the Indian Hills Restricted Parking District, third and final reading.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, if this does pass, who will be the contact for this from the Neighborhood Association? Will there be an email address, a phone number? If someone in the Neighborhood Group wants to discuss this with, would it be the Neighborhood President? Is that who they would discuss this with?
Yes.
If they wanted this amended later or whatever?
And, and that's readily available.
Okay, so where would they get that? Would Neighborhood Services have that information?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
Okay, and, and I'm just trying to get a clear understanding, you know, because I am for Neighborhood Groups and restricted parking and all. So are we saying to these, to the, these residents who currently have a commercial vehicle or 30...
Large, large recreational.
A large recreational vehicle, 30 to 37 feet? Are we telling them now, even though they have this, that they can't park it in their yard? Or are we telling them that they can park it behind the building line?
They can't park it anywhere.
They can't park it anywhere?
Correct.
Well, you know...
There, there are six out of 1,300.
And, and, and I understand what we're saying here, but, um, I think that, um, you know, we should, since they already have the vehicles, the, the recreation vehicles, and they already parking them and they already there, that we should make some type of, um, resolution or something for them. Can they park it in the backyard? In the back?
Most of those are maneuverability.
In, in the back?
And they, excuse me?
Can they get it back?
Can they get it back? Well, I'm, okay.
Now that she's asked a question, I'm gonna ask the question.
Well, you've lost me now.
Does this mean that anybody that has a vehicle, an RV, that's longer than 25 feet, cannot park it in the city limits?
No. No.
No, that's not correct.
You know, I...
Mr. Witcher?
Okay, you know, I, you know, Mr. Sosby has, has done work for me, and he's, you know, I've considered him a friend for a long time. But, you know, Mr. Sosby also has a concrete business, and he, how many lots do you have down Levy Fenced Ten? How many lots do you have with all your equipment fenced in? Three, four?
Two.
Two? Okay.
Equipment sized.
All right, so he's got another place he can put his motor home. It's, it's fenced in, where he keeps his construction equipment.
Any other comments? Mr. Taylor?
So, we're, we're getting ready to vote on a piece of legislation that's gonna, let's say I live in Indian Hills and I own one of these vehicles. After we pass this vote, I cannot have my, I can't park my recreational vehicle next to my house?
Nope.
That's correct.
If, if it's longer than 25 feet or over eight feet high?
Well, it's longer than, it's 30-something feet.
Exactly.
Man, that wouldn't be good, I can tell you that right now.
Ms. Ross?
I know once someone had mentioned something about grandfathering these in, and I know Mr. Carter has taught me well that you cannot grandfather in a nuisance, and so if these are parked there after this passes, they're considered a nuisance, and so they cannot be grandfathered in.
Mr. Witcher?
You know, I'll remind you again, you know, one of the driving forces was these large motor vehicles, or, or, or large motor homes obstructing people's view backing out of their driveways. You know, that was one of the driving forces in this.
Hold, hold tight. So, hold tight. Okay, let, let's, I think conversation is, is done. One more question, and I'm ready to...
Just one more comment. I, I really, really think that, that the sponsor or whoever this legislation is belonging to might wanna consider holding it, because this, that is, that is a tough, tough pill to swallow.
Mr. Witcher, you wanna have a motion to adopt? Do I have a second?
Yeah.
No, I don't have a motion to adopt, okay. Your call, Count Alderman.
I move to adopt.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Have no seconds. Okay, let's go on to the next piece of legislation.
So then I have a question, though. If it's the third and final reading, which is the reading to adopt, does it stay on the agenda if there's not a motion to adopt for lack of a second?
No, it does not.
So it comes off the agenda?
It does. Does it die for lack of a second? It dies for lack of a second. Mr. Witcher?
Mayor, you know, folks, you, you have done a great disservice to the folks in Indian Hills. You've worked on this long and hard, and, you know, and, you know, you know, I can't hold it, 'cause it's gone.
Would you like to withdraw your motion to, to adopt?
Yes, I will.
Do I have anybody wishing that, or saying that he cannot withdraw his motion? All right, can I accept that from the chair, or do we need to vote on that?
If, if he wants to withdraw his motion, and there's no objection, he can do that. For the same token, he could file again for the next meeting.
All right, if there's no objection, we'll, we'll allow Mr. Witcher to withdraw his motion. Okay? Ms. Ross?
Can I just say something, please?
Sure.
This is the reason when we were working on the LRD, the Lakewood Recreational Improvement Restricted Parking District, the, the issue came down to the RVs, and we saw that it was not gonna pass, and that's why we removed the RV restriction from that. Because, yes, we, we would have done a huge disservice to Lakewood if we had, it failed over a few RVs, and that's why we allowed them.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go on to the next piece of legislation, please.
So this is held, and the public...
This is held.
The public hearing is adjourned or resisted?
It's adjourned.
Okay. Okay, new business is going to be consent agenda?
Uh, let's just take those individually. I think we gotta pull one of the two anyway, so let's just take them all.
Yes, sir. R-13-122, Mayor Smith.
Call it, please.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Shanika Johnson to the North of Rock Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-13-123, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating $41,200 from the General Fund for the Code Enforcement Department's Debris and Demolition Removal Program.
So moved.
And we have an amendment.
We have an amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
The amendment, Councilor, do you pass it out?
Uh, yes, sir.
We really don't need to. I mean, it's just a change in the 41,200 to 45,500. We left out a best of abatement on one of the units and...
Two of the units.
Two of the units, okay.
I'll make that amendment.
Second.
I'll make that amendment.
All right, so Debbie, Ms. Ross made the amendment.
I'll second it.
Mr. Taylor seconded. On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-13-124, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to purchase certain real property located on Dorothy Rodham Way east of Virginia Kelly Drive and Riverfront Drive and appropriating[1645.58] funds.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the 2013 quota ordinance for the North Little Rock Electric Department, first reading.
Do I have a motion to suspend?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the 2013 quota ordinance for the North Little Rock Electric Department, second reading.
Who's been the rules and the way of all readings? On the second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we done?
If, if he makes a motion to adopt it-
Some move. And a second, Mr. Height?
Yes.
Alright, let's go.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-13-64, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a waiver request for parking space requirements at the new North Little Rock High School Stadium in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Who's been the rules placed on the second reading?
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a waiver request for parking space requirements at the new North Little Rock High School Stadium in North Little Rock, second reading.
Who's been the rules placed on the third reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a waiver request for parking space requirements at the new North Little Rock High School Stadium in North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Have a motion, Ms. Ross? Question?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr., Bill Gray is here, too, and I'd like him to come up, 'cause this has been a big concern for the neighborhood around the high school, you know, with the improvements and everything. Uh, if you could, if you would just kind of explain to us, you know, and I do understand that all the parking, as far as student parking, has been covered now, correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're not gonna need a waiver, you're not gonna need a waiver for any student parking. This is strictly stadium parking, correct?
As far as student and staff parking, the requirement would be approximately 720 spaces, and we're committing to 950 spaces.
Okay.
So, it's just for the stadium parking, it's what we're asking the waiver for.
And, and this is if the stadium is at max capacity?
That's correct.
It's totally full and there's not a seat left in the house, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you could just kind of explain the difference?
Well, you know, right now, the existing stadium capacity is about 4,300 seats, and we, North Little Rock School District has 571 parking spaces for those 400, for those 4,300 seats. So, right now, currently, we are deficient by 504 spaces. With the new high school stadium design, we hope to, we have acquired some property to the east, and we hope to acquire some more property. We also have the property at, at Poplar Street, and so we're committing to 950 spaces minimum. Hopefully, we'll have more than that. And so, we're gonna be deficient by 300 spaces by providing 950 spaces. So, we're gonna be improving the condition by 200 spaces with more seating.
So, you actually have 204 more currently, and with, with the new design, you'll have than what's required, correct?
We'll have, we'll be 300 deficient-
Right.
-on the stadium.
Right, but you were short 504.
We're short 504.
So, basically, you're improving it by 204?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, now, you said even if these different options in the properties that you're looking and hoping to, you will, you're committing to 950?
That's correct.
Even if you have to use Poplar?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Even if you have to use what?
Poplar Street School.
No.
Ms. White?
Right now, I kind of calculated it's about 25% more spaces than with the old.
That is-
About that. So, it's actually-
That's about right.
We, we, the city owns three small lots east of the high school that we're, we ended up in foreclosure, or we had tax lanes on it or whatever. It'd be my intent, uh, there's some clouds on those titles, and we, I told the school district that if they would use their people to clear the titles, that we would, subject to y'all's approval, give them those three lots.
Are those the lights behind the car wash?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just give lots away? Can we just give, I mean?
Well, we'll do it in consideration of a dollar.
Oh, okay, I see.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
I just kind of, these lots, the, the titles on them, that, one of those pieces of property had been brought to the council once before to sell those lots, and the title was so clouded that they couldn't ever get a clear title, and so the deals have never gone through on selling those.
It'll take them a year to get it cleared, I bet, and a lot of fees, a lot more than what it's worth, probably.
Right, it would cost the city to clear that, correct?
It's gonna worth a lot more than the school district, yeah. Okay, Bill, Ms. Ross?
And just one more thing, too, if this does pass, you know, and we are, you know, we do go and we're short the 300 spaces. I know that the neighborhood, we're gonna have to have some, you know, we've, we've talked about possibly putting up signs, no, like they do during the, at Dicky Stevens for the ballgames, no parking on game days and things like that. So, we, we will have to do some kind of, you know, help with the neighborhood after this, if this does pass, to make sure that their driveways are not blocked, like they have been.
Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
On the motion?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Have a motion to adopt? Some move.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. We will now have public comment section, and I have two that have signed up for public comment. It's Billy Fuel. Billy, three minutes, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Billy Fuel, a lifelong resident of Levy and Bering Cross areas. The reason I'm here is to dispute the city attorney's opinion that I've received from Bradley, Mr. Bradley, that the code enforcement officers are not really required to follow the mandatory requirements of some of the municipal codes. And I'm speaking about Chapter 42, Section 34, the code that makes it mandatory that you issue a notice to abate whenever a nuisance is found. And it's gotta have particular stuff in it, and the officers, they routinely, routinely issue citations on their first visit with a resident whenever they find a nuisance, and that's, it's, uh, it's not how, how the codes wrote. You know, I contacted the mayor's office, Mr. Bradley. I asked him about that practice of issuing citations without issuing the mandated notices, and he said that, well, it was a very effective tool. You know, I thought thumbscrews is an effective tool, too. But, uh, just sending the residents directly to court to talk to the judge, you know, shouldn't be their primary tool in dealing with, you know, residents in our community, you know, no matter how frustrating it is, you know. That, that code specifically states that they're supposed to write that, and, uh, that the officers, there's another, well, you quoted me, that other officer, the officers can write citations for any violation within, within their jurisdiction. But, until someone violates the, the notice to abate, there is no violation. And, uh, and that's just the, the way that reads, and I just, I've asked, I've emailed your office and your office and both of my aldermen to get clarification on that, and I haven't really gotten any responses.
I don't know that I've seen it, but we'll certainly look at it. I, I would think that our legal team is gonna be pretty much correct. We've been practicing this for a long time. Have you got an attorney that is advising you on this?
Oh, sir, I'm a citizen.
Okay, so your, your interpretation is your interpretation, not a legal opinion?
Right. There is law, I mean, it specifically states-
Have you been to court?
Excuse me?
Have you been to court?
No, sir.
You have not been to court yet?
Um, I don't have court data either.
Okay, alright.
You know, I'm not scheduled to go to court.
Alright, so you didn't get a citation, you're just saying that it-
Uh, yeah, I did get a citation.
Okay.
But when I told him I wanted to go to court, it, I don't have a citation anymore.
Can we get him a legal answer to what his questions are? Absolutely.
Let me read the statute for you.
We don't, we don't, we've got it. I mean, honestly, we do have it, and Chief Bradley, if you'll flip that email from Mr. Fuel to our legal office, then he can make, give him a legal opinion. And then, if you still disagree with us, then probably, we probably need to get an attorney to argue your point.
Well, I mean, I shouldn't have to. Right is right, and once, once they sit and look at the statute, you know, you know, then, a rule in the general part that says that they have the rule to issue a citation for a violation doesn't authorize them to not follow the mandated requirements of the, the code they're trying to enforce.
Why don't you look at our opinion and, and then we can debate it further. How's that sound?
I mean, it specifically says they shall issue that, and it's defined as mandatory.
Okay, we'll, we'll let one of these lawyers answer your question for you, 'cause I don't-
We'll be happy to meet with him, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you.
Excellent, and I've gave both my email addresses. I believe I've emailed you from my work and my home. I emailed, so I should be easy to find.
Okay. Mark Middleton. Mark, I know what you're gonna talk about, and I hate to limit to you to three minutes, but try to squeeze it in. Maybe you can visit with some of us after it's over.
I will, I will. Honorable Mayor Smith, distinguished council members, appreciate the opportunity to address you. Before I begin my comments, I would like to, to publicly state that I had a very positive experience with a distressing issue when I called the mayor's office today. It's rare that you get the mayor to call you back within a couple of hours, but he did, and his staff was very helpful, and I want to say thank you. My issue is one that has economic implications for, for a business that I own, and one that, quite frankly, I find disturbing. I'd like to share the facts with you and at least have you guys take this into consideration. Beyond being involved in the heating and air conditioning business, my family owns a fair amount of real estate in North Little Rock. Two of those properties happen to be car washes. We own the Splash Car Wash and the Suds Car Wash. The Suds is on Mammell Boulevard and Crystal Hill Road, and we've owned that for a couple of years. I just came back from vacation, and, and one of our employees sent me a photograph today that was distressing, was a rather large steel structure that is on the northwest corner of our property, that is obviously the beginning of a sign that's being erected, that is 10-foot wide and 28 feet tall. Has two, three-foot banners at the top of it, has 10 two-foot banners on the sign, and it is a sign that, the origins of this started when a, when a gentleman of the name of David Elrod, who developed the Walmart complex over there, sent a letter to Mayor Hayes on November the 26th, and basically said that Walmart had renewed their request for a sign on a piece of property, which is actually was a sliver that was .017 tenths of an acre that sits just in front and beside my property. And it said that Walmart had, had re-initiated a request to erect that sign, and sent a letter to the mayor, and then on December the 27th, came before this body, or presumably maybe your predecessors, and in one reading, the sign ordinance was passed. I was never given notice. I obviously didn't have the ability to comment, which is kind of fundamentally opposite of what we do in our democratic system. I happen to own a business as kind of an impulse purchase. The sign is gonna be very obstructive to my business when, and I appreciate the ordinance being sent to me today. When I read the ordinance, there's actually a provision in there in Section 4 that says specifically that this does not affect any other development or business, which is counter to what really is occurring here. I don't know that I can get any redress from this body. I'd like to explore that, if you guys would take that under advisement or under consideration. This did not go before the planning commission, which I understand you guys have the right that it doesn't. There was not a sign board variance for the sign, even though it's a massive sign. What I'd specifically like to request is at least a stop work order on this sign until additional facts can be presented, and those that does affect have an opportunity to at least present what the detrimental effects are to my own economic interests. So, hopefully, I haven't violated the three-minute rule. I know you guys are anxious to get home. I certainly would appreciate any input you could give me or any commentary that you guys could give me. If I'm not successful here, one thing that I would hopefully encourage you guys to do is, is that, you know, in the future, I think notice and comment is always good as a matter of public policy, especially when there are implications for someone who's invested as much money as I have in this particular property, and without question, it's gonna have a significant economic impact on my business. But, thank you for the time, and I appreciate the opportunity to at least approach you, and I appreciate the quick response earlier today, Mayor.
Hey, Mark, if you'll, if you'll hang tough, as soon as we leave the meeting, I'll visit with you. We've done a little bit more research this afternoon, so. Ms. Ross?
I, I just wanted to know, Mr. Middleton, know that it was not a unanimous vote, so, I mean, not everyone, I don't know if you had the vote count, so.
Ms. Robinson?
Different comment.
Okay, alright, thanks, Mark. Okay, public comments for the city council members? Ms. Robinson?
Uh, Mayor Smith, we have a geese problem out on Parkdale Street near, the people who live on Parkdale, who property abuts Greenlee Lake, and one neighbor mentioned that one day there were about 30 geese in the street, and they couldn't move, and they wanted to plow them all down, but they, they didn't want to violate any rules, you know, and they said that sometime when the geese are in the street, they will not move, and they have to sit and wait on them. Or sometime they can't get out the driveway, 'cause they got to sit and wait for the family to decide they want to get out the way. So, they're telling me that the geese are a nuisance, and they want help, some type of action. So, if we have a geese expert or somebody to get with me so I can satisfy the, the people down there off of Parkdale.
I think we found out last year, we don't have an expert on staff. And I certainly would like to, after tonight's parking issue, let's put that off for about a month or two.
Okay.
But, yeah, we'll look into, the problem at Burns Park is getting worse, and so we're looking into other options.
Okay.
Ms. Ross?
Lakewood's just covered right now.
Lakewood, too, yeah. Right. Mr. Witcher?
I'll give you a piece of ice and tell you what we did in Indian Hills. We captured them and had them hauled away.
Other neighbor?
The neighbors did it. Neighborhood did it.
Yep. Well, we're gonna have to look at all options, 'cause it's getting pretty bad out at Burns Park. Any other comments? I would like, Ms. Ross?
Well, I have an announcement I was supposed to make.
Okay.
I'm gonna make my announcement. Thursday, July the 25th, at 6:30, North Rock Community Center, that's the one at Pershing and Willow, the Dark Hollow CDC is having an emergency preparedness forum, and this is for everyone in the city. It's to guide neighborhoods on developing plans. Emergency services will be there, Union Pacific will be there, North Rock Police Department, North Rock Fire Department, I know they're working on a couple of others to be there. It's just to give individuals tools, you know, with Interstate 30 and 40 right here, right through the middle of our city, you know, trucks, we don't know what's in the railroad running all through the city, you know, there's, there's possibility for all kinds of preparedness that we need.
Who's leading that?
Belinda Bernie, the Dark Hollow CDC.
Who's leading it on our staff?
Ricky Zell.